All right. Uh, thirty seconds. All right, Chair. Uh, we are ready to begin on your call.
Good evening, everyone. I am welcoming you to the Pontiac Planning Commission for October 5th of 2022 and officially starting our meeting. I would like to introduce those who are here with me today. On my far left, I have Renita Duval. To her immediate right would be Mike McGinnis. To my left is Mr. Christopher Northcross.
Can you make sure your mic is on, please?
It's on. Am I not on? Can you hear me now?
Uh, that much better.
Okay, good. And then to my right, Mr. Tim Shepherd, and to my far right, I have Donovan Smith, who is our planning director this evening. And I am ready for a roll call.
All right. Commissioner Parlove.
Present.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Present.
Commissioner Duval. Commissioner McGinnis.
Present.
And Commissioner Northcross.
Present.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Excellent. Do we have any amendments to or an amendment to the agenda, or can we make a motion to approve the agenda?
Uh, there are no amendments to the agenda.
Okay. I seek a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
Support.
Roll call.
Uh, sorry, who did the support?
Uh, Northcross.
Northcross. And who did the?
I did.
Thank you. All right, roll call. Commissioner Parlove.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Duval.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner McGinnis.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Northcross.
Yes, to approve.
Chair, the agenda has been approved.
Excellent. And by the way, I'm Mona Parlove. I had neglected to introduce myself. We have meeting minutes for review. Does anyone have any items they would like to address? Renita, anything you'd like to add or change?
No.
Nope. Mr. McGinnis.
None.
Mr. Northcross?
None.
Mr. Shepherd? And I have no adjustments to the meetings. So I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved? That we approve the meeting minutes?
Any support?
I'll support it.
Okay, ready for roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Parlove.
Yes, to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Duval.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner McGinnis.
Yes, to approve.
And Commissioner Northcross.
Yes, to approve.
Chair, the minutes have been approved.
Thank you, Donovan. Next, we're into our special presentations portion of our meeting. Is there anything that we need to be aware of now?
Chair, there are no special presentations.
Okay. Then we are ready to open up the first public hearing. We have, uh, item six point one on our agenda. It's ZMA twenty-two dash oh eight, the zoning map amendment for, um, the applicant Walter Manju. And great, thank you. Donovan, I believe we'll go through the presentation, and then we will ask you to approach the podium if you have anything you'd like to add. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chair. The first, uh, public hearing today is ZMA two-two dash zero eight. This is a zoning map amendment for Nature's Remedy Pontiac LLC, uh, for a, uh, parking to rezone from R1 to P1 for off-street parking. This is for a, uh, approved medical marijuana provisioning center, parcel number six four one four three one three eight zero zero two one. Again, this is a rezoning from R1 Single Family to P1 for off-street parking. For your, uh, reference, uh, this item did come before you at the previous planning commission meeting. Um, and the overall project consists of two parcels or, or two areas of parcels. Um, but we're actually only going to focus on the, uh, smaller parcel of the two. Um, so for your reference, we are just looking at the single parcel. Um, we're not looking at the, uh, the additional parcels that are currently zoned C1. Um, so the applicant is proposing to do a rezoning to the P1 Parking District, uh, which is a district whose intent is to provide specific locations for public or private off-street parking for those uses which are not able to provide adequate onsite parking or parking within their own boundaries. Uh, the zoning ordinance does provide, uh, several criteria, uh, which those parcels that are designated parking or used for parking under this zoning classification should comply with. Uh, the parking area shall be an accessory to and for use in connection with one or more businesses or industrial establishments located in adjacent non-residential zoning districts. The parking area shall be used for parking or passenger vehicles for incremental periods of less than one day. So that will be daily traffic or daily parking. No commercial repair or service work of any kind shall be conducted in that parking area. No signs of any kind other than signs designating entrances, exits, and conditions of use shall be maintained on such parking area. And lastly, such parking lots shall be situated on a premise, on premises which have an area of not less than five thousand square feet. Shall be contiguous and adjacent to the use it is intended to serve. There may be a private driveway or public street or other than a major or urban thoroughfare as defined by the master thoroughfare plan or public alley between such parking district and the use that it intends to serve. Um, so you, you can see here where, uh, where they are locating that proposed P1 Parking. It is alley adjacent, and it would be, uh, to support the, uh, development for the marijuana provisioning center located along Caesar Chavez. Those parcels zoned C1 Commercial. Um, so you can see that parcel on the left highlighted in red, and on the right, you can see the current zoning map. Um, you can see, uh, this yellow here designates residential parcels, so it is a residential neighborhood. Um, the parcel they are looking to rezone is zoned R1, and then, uh, this corridor here is Caesar Chavez, and then you get towards Old Telegraph and Golf Drive, uh, to the south, and but those parcels adjacent to Orchard Lake Road, our zone C1 Local Commercial. Um, when we looked at the future land use of the district, uh, the subject site is designated as traditional neighborhood residential. Um, and the goals of the, of this category is to allow, allow for a range of building styles and guidelines to replicate Pontiac's traditional neighborhood development pattern. Uh, the zoning map amendment request is generally consistent and not in conflict with the master plan, um, with that traditional neighborhood residential classification. Um, so when we look at the master plan, um, it looks very similar to the zoning map where you have the, uh, large tracts of residential parcels, uh, designated traditional neighborhood residential, uh, to the north and Abbey North and Northwest along the corridor. Uh, those parcels are designated regional commercial, uh, where the site is proposed to be developed, um, and the additional sites along Orchard Lake. Um, in regards to our medical marijuana overlay district, um, you can see where our downtown district is highlighted. Um, and then there are additional districts outside of this map. Um, however, this site is located outside of the medical marijuana overlay district. Um, of the provisioning center uses, five are permitted to be located outside these districts. This would be one of those five that is approved. We do have, uh, zoning map criteria, uh, to determine if a proposed zoning map amendment is, uh, approvable or in compliance with our master plan. Um, as described in the master plan, the area is designated traditional neighborhood residential. Uh, this project would be consistent with the goals and policies and directives of the city's master plan. The subject site's physical, geological, hyd- and hydrological and other environmental features are compatible with the proposed district. The applicant did not provide evidence that they could develop a single-family home on the property and receive a reasonable return on the investment. The proposed uses of the proposed zoning district are limited to parking and would not have a long-term negative impact on the property or surrounding neighborhood. The city's utilities and services would be sufficient to accommodate the proposed development without compromising the city's health, safety, and welfare. The street system would not be negatively impacted by the proposed zoning district. The boundaries of the rezoning are reasonable in relationship to surrounding and zoning district dimensional requirements. With all the, uh, findings of fact, findings of fact, it would be more appropriate to rezone the land to the conforming P1 Parking District than any other zoning district. It would also be inappropriate to amend the R1 zoning district to permit the proposed parking use, and it is more appropriate to rezone the land to the P1 Parking District rather than to amend the list of permitted dis- uh, uses. The proposed rezoning does not create an isolated or incompatible zone in the neighborhood, also known as spot zoning. In our staff findings, uh, the proposed site does support off-street insulated parking for the adjacent development, uh, the SPR two-two dash two-six site plan. The applicant requests rezoning of the subject site from R1 to P1. The master plan defines the site as traditional neighborhood, and the proposed zoning, uh, complements the future land use designation of the area. The subject property is compatible with the P1 Parking District standards, and any future development, um, of this site or surrounding sites must further comply with the city's standards, codes, ordinances, and procedures of the zoning ordinance, um, such as landscaping, screening, lighting, and vehicle access. Um, the planning commission did approve a preliminary site plan approval on September seventh, and the conditions of that preliminary approval are as follows. A variance is required for the rear yard setback. Uh, this site is going before the zoning board of appeals at the October, uh, zoning board of appeals meeting. Um, they were requested to relocate their trans- uh, transformer to the primary property and not locate it on the parking parcel. All signs proposed, ground and building-mounted signs must meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance and the clear vision requirements. Uh, they are to provide design, standard criteria, and the calculations for compliance, uh, for the site plan approval. Um, the P1 Parking District is required for the non-residential off-street parking, which is what we are reviewing today. Uh, the development must comply with right-of-way buffering and landscaping requirements. This applies for the parking parcel and the primary parcel for development. Uh, seven, the plan will be reviewed or deferred for review for engineering and departments of public works plan review. And lastly, they must provide an updated current property survey, uh, for those areas to be vacated, and that has been provided to the planning division. These renderings you did see in your previous meeting, they are just presented for you again here today. Um, so you can see the proposed rendering of an existing facility and a conceptual rendering of what, uh, the Pontiac model would look like. Um, and again, you have these same elevations that are provided in your packet, um, and were shared with you in the preliminary site planning review meeting. And that concludes the presentation for ZMA two-two dash zero eight.
Very good. Thank you, Donovan. If the applicant would like to approach the microphone and add anything to Donovan's presentation that you would like to amend, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Wally Manjo. I'm with Nature's Remedy of Pontiac, Coveley.
Thank you. Um, anything that you would like to add for us this evening that Donovan didn't touch on?
I think he, uh, touched on everything. Uh, he did a good job.
Excellent. Great. Well, I think in order to make this most efficient for everyone's time, what I will do is I will open up public comments since this is a public hearing. And after public comments are done, then we will take any questions from my fellow commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to open public comment. Please approach the microphone if you have any questions or statements you would like to make. And I don't see a lot of activity happening there, so I'm going to now close public comment. And I would like to start to my far left. Renita, do you have any questions for our applicant?
No, I don't. I just, um, want to say commend you on your activities and your compliances. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McGinnis.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for your time this evening and your interest in the Pontiac community. Uh, at last month's planning commission meeting, we obviously got to do a, a deep dive into, uh, the proposal and, and what's coming for, uh, this site. What can a resident on that residential street expect? What would be sort of the landscape barrier or other barriers, specifically with this lot? We're, we're speaking of the parking, um, converting the residential to parking. Um, what would be that buffer or barrier to staff or the applicant? So that way residents can know, going in with eyes open, what they can expect.
If I may?
Please.
Uh, so currently, it's a vacant land. All it is, it's grass. You cut the grass and weeds. Now it's being redeveloped, lighting, uh, fenced wall, paved. It's gonna br- that whole alley's being redeveloped, so it's gonna add more value to the residents behind the property. One, it's gonna actually, uh, reface the entire corner there, not only for the property, but also for the city of Pontiac.
And through the chair, if I, if I may add to that.
I'm sorry. I was gonna, uh, will there, there, there will be surveillance there as well?
Oh, a hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, I'm sorry.
That's, that's, that's number one.
All right, go ahead, Donovan.
Thank you, Chair. Um, there are requirements, uh, in the zoning ordinance for landscaping and buffering when parking lots are located adjacent to parcel-zoned residential. Um, if you're familiar, these are the type A and type B landscape buffers. Uh, we went over them in some previous cases, uh, but they require either a wall, uh, a masonry wall, uh, landscape screening, and/or a combination of both, um, directly between, uh, the area proposed for parking and the residential to the north, um, which would be the short side of the parcel, and then the residential to the east, which would be the long side of the parcel.
Thank you. Uh, my next question, I believe there was discussion of an existing garage structure that is or was on the property. Is, is it still standing, and that will be presumably, uh, eliminated or remaining?
Correct. There is a, a aluminum, I call it a shed, garage, rusted. It's gonna get removed.
It will be removed. Thank you. Uh, that concludes my questions.
Thank you very much.
Although I, I guess I should ask, what should be your ideal target for completion for the other parcel and this parcel in question, if the ball went, um, most ideally to your plans and preferences?
So, two factors. Uh, one, in order to start construction, uh, we want to make sure that, that the entire site is approved for the purpose of the rezoning and the redevelopment. Therefore, there's going to be a lot of underground sewers, engineering, lighting, electrical pulling, light bulbs in the back. We want to make sure we get all these people in there during the removal of the earth and redevelopment of the site all at once. That way, we don't have to revisit in six months or a year. We want to make sure we get all this taken care of all, once the planning commissioner says go, we go.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you.
If I may.
Yes.
Add, Chair, to just the overall timeline. So if this item is approved today, um, between next week and the following week, it would go before city council, uh, for first reading and second reading, and ultimately either, uh, approved or denied. If it is approved, then the next step would be, uh, coming back to this body for the proposed vacation or the street vacation for the area they are requesting to be vacated, and those details will be, uh, provided at that time. Uh, the vacation will also go to city council for approval, similar to this process. And then the applicant would then be able to submit for a final site plan approval, uh, which would be the full detail of engineering, fire approval, planning approval. Um, and then that would come back here for a final, um, approval from this body.
So it sounds like there's another few months ahead before they're ready to break ground.
Po- po- possibly. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for that information. Mr. Northcross.
Thank you. Um, looking over your plans, they look very complete. I still have reservations, uh, not with your planning, uh, it's more with our process. Uh, this concerns our, many of the problems we had with the medical marijuana overlay district approval and how we reached an agreement, this was done throughout the city, of where facilities should be placed in a medical marijuana overlay, three overlay districts. Uh, the thought was, my understanding, the thought was that we would start with these districts first and then branch out from those districts using information we had learned from the operation of different facilities, marijuana, medical marijuana facilities within these districts. We have not put one, there has not been one, um, oper- uh, 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 there's not been one facility, medical marijuana facility up and running in any of those three districts as of yet. And I'm concerned, uh, I'd like to see something happening in those approved districts where there had been thought about access from the police and, uh, to the facility in case there was an emergency, because many of the facilities, particularly the provisioning, uh, facilities, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, are still running on a cash basis. So because of the federal laws and other things, that, uh, there had been a lot of thought put into that, those three overlay districts. It just looks, I, I, I'm still very uncomfortable with walking forward outside of those districts before we have a facility running within one of those three districts. The facility's running within one of those three districts. So for that reason, I'll be voting no. That's the only reason. That's the only reason. But for that reason, I'll be voting no. That I, I, it's just some risk that I would prefer us to walk forward in the future focusing on those three overlay districts first before we branch out any further. Uh, I believe we've approved a, uh, processing facility of type and a growing facility outside of that area. But, uh, I'm saying, wow. Within the area that we have approved, we do not have one facility running as of yet. So that's my concern. That's my concern. Again, thank you for thinking of Pontiac.
Thank you. I, I respect your opinion.
If I, if I may through the chair, just to speak to that comment.
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Northcross, you are one hundred percent correct in, uh, the intention and model of how we designed and drafted the medical marijuana overlay district and ordinance. Uh, we did develop three overlay districts, uh, the Walton Boulevard Overlay District, the Caesar Chavez Overlay District, and the Downtown Overlay District. In regards to strictly the provisioning center uses, while we did approve others, just the provisioning center, we did approve five uses in each district, or five provisioning centers in each district. So that will be five downtown, five in Caesar Chavez, and five along Walton. Also, within that same, uh, overlay district scheme, we, uh, also allowed for five provisioning centers to be located outside of the, uh, overlay district. Um, so this project and the, the next- So this project and the next item you will hear, both of these, well, this one is one of the five permitted outside the district. So this rezoning or this project is within the scheme that we approved back in 2000. That would be 2018 or 19 when we drafted the medical marijuana overlay district. And then the next item you'll see is located inside the district. So to, just to your point, you are correct in regards to the intent of that scheme we created and that this project is within the scope of the scheme we developed.
Thank you Donovan. Tim?
Sure, and I'll just, I'll just kinda go along with that point too. The provisioning centers are different than the grow operations. The grow operations, like I know, I know that the grow operations, we have a little bit more of a, it's where you're going with this. It's on. This one's not. The provisioning centers though, these guys were approved just like the others were. So there were 20 approvals, right? So they had been approved in the same process that the other ones were, just what Donovan just said. So it's not a, it's not a, they're not asking us if that area works. They've already had their approvals from, from the, or from, what, from, who am I trying to say? Where the approval, well, so, so, but the point is, is that when we get to these other questions where we have grows, that's a different thing. I mean, putting a grow in a retail area doesn't really work. But these five in the outer areas, we're gonna see the other four, well, fairly soon I'm sure. They've already been approved, so it's a little different. It's not really up to us at this point to make that, is how I understand it. So I'm not, I'm not going, I appreciate your concerns and I appreciate what you're saying, but it's different than when we're talking grows or processing. Those are, those are decisions we have to look at in a different way, I think, so. Just trying to fill that gap in if it helps at all.
And if I may add, in the ordinance for those provisioning centers located outside the overlay, a special exemption and public hearing is required, which we did have at the previous meeting where you also approved the preliminary site plan review. For those provisioning centers located inside the overlays, there is no special exemption or public hearing required. So from, just then from that regards, they did provide that public input. We did hold a public hearing for a provisioning center that is located the one of five outside of the overlay districts.
The clerk is what I was trying to say. This wasn't coming out of my mouth.
Alright, thank you Donovan and thank you Tim. Okay, great. And I have nothing to add. I am comfortable with the information that's in front of me. So I believe I'm ready for a motion.
I can make a motion.
Yes, please.
Per this rezoning criteria found in section 6.804 of the zoning ordinance, planning divisions, technical review and findings, I make a motion to recommend approval of ZMA 22-08. The recommendation would be presented to City Council for approval at the request of Nature's Remedy Pontiac LLC Walter Manju to rezone parcel number 64-14-31-380-021 from R-1 Family Dwelling 2 and P1 Park.
Excellent. Do I have a support?
I'll support.
Great. I'm ready for a roll call.
Alright, Commissioner Parlove.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Shepard.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Duval.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner McGinnis.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Northcross.
No, it should not be approved.
Thank you. Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you very much Donovan. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you folks.
Alright, for our next item on the agenda.
Yes.
Which is item 6.2, another public hearing, ZMA 22-09. It's another zoning map amendment for the applicant Steve Robinson. Is our applicant? Is he here this evening? So if you would like to approach the podium, and Donovan will do a presentation of your proposal of what we are gonna be discussing this evening. And then, once he's done, if you have anything to add, you can state your name and address for the record and we will go from there. So I will let Donovan continue.
Thank you Chair. The next public hearing item we have today is ZMA 22-09. This behalf on the applicant, 1111 Provisioning Center. The address is 529 East Walton. This is to support a proposed medical marijuana provisioning center, rezoning of, one, two, three, four subject parcels from R1 One Family Dwelling District to a C3 Corridor Commercial District, parcels number 641409377-05015-016-017 and -028. Similar to the previous item, this item did become before you for a preliminary site plan review at your September 7th meeting. The boundaries have been slightly adjusted. They were included, but they were adjusted to better show the scope of the zoning map amendment that you can see the outline of those parcels on the screen here. As they are proposing the C3 Corridor Commercial District, that district is designed to provide for a mixture of uses that are appropriate along thoroughfare and collector's streets that have moderate to large traffic volumes. This district supports a wide range of uses appropriate within this context, including retail and service, commercial office, and low-impact light industrial uses. It is expected that most customers of establishments in this district will travel via automobile and there is little essential interdependence of activities. Each established typically will have its own automobile parking area. So typically uses in this district are self-serviced in terms of parking and traffic and those things. So on the screen, you can see on the left, the aerial of the boundaries of the project. Where you see the four stars indicate the four parcels that are currently zoned residential that they are proposing to rezone to C3 Corridor Commercial. And you can also see where two of those parcels, the vertical parcel to the left, there is or was a former home, as well as this parcel here. Both of these parcels are proposed to be demolished and for the project. On the right of the screen, you can see the yellow parcels again that indicate R1 Residential zoning. You can see the makeup of the additional residential to the north and across Jocelyn Avenue to the east. And then these orange and blue parcels are also residential parcels. They're just large lot residential. So they're just, the parcels are just a little larger, but the makeup of this area is single-family. The three parcels, they are proposing to rezone so that the entire corner would be consistent with the C3 Corridor Commercial, similar to the corner across the street. When we look at the future land use plan, the subject site is designated as neighborhood commercial. Yep, so you have neighborhood commercial land use and this district is intended for smaller scale commercial development to cert, that serves the needs of the surrounding neighborhood. The site design of the neighborhood commercial area and project needs to enhance the pedestrian experience by creating human-scale places. The zoning map amendment is consistent with the requirements found within the traditional neighborhood resid, residential, should be commercial, sorry, the traditional neighborhood commercial district classification. And you can see in this, this is our future land use plan. Again, you see the large tracks of suburban residential or residential future land use. And you can see the boundaries of the proposed rezoning actually align pretty directly with the zoning ordinance. So again, they're proposing to rezone all these parcels within that boundary to C3 and that C3 district is consistent with that neighborhood commercial future land use classification. In regards to the medical marijuana overlay district, this is our Walton Boulevard Overlay. It is located within that district and it's here at that intersection of Jocelyn Avenue and Walton Boulevard, indicated by the red star. When we review the zoning map amendment criteria, it, this proposed site does comply with those criteria. The neighborhood commercial district is consistent with the goals and policies of the city's master plan. The subject site's physical, geological, hydrological, and other environmental features are compatible with the proposed zoning district. The applicant did not provide evidence and means to develop a single-family home on the property for a reasonable return on investment. The proposed uses of the proposed, of the zoning district are restricted to or would be located within the C3 Corridor District. The city's utilities and services are sufficient to accommodate the proposed development without compromising the city's health, safety, and welfare. The street system will not be negatively impacted by the proposed zoning district. The boundaries of the rezonings are reasonable in relationship to the surrounding and zoning district dimensional requirements. Regarding the findings of fact, it is more appropriate to rezone the land to the conforming C3 Corridor Commercial District than any other zoning district. It would be inappropriate to amend the R1 zoning district to permit commercial and retail uses and it is more appropriate to rezone the land to the conforming C3 Corridor Commercial District rather than to amend the list of permitted uses. The proposed rezoning does not create an isolated or incompatible, incompatible zone in the neighborhood also known as spot zoning. In the staff findings, the proposed rezoning does support the additional land for parking and retention as outlined in the site plan. The applicant requests to rezone from R1 Single Family to C3 Corridor Commercial. The master plan identifies the site as neighborhood commercial and the proposed zoning designation complements the future land use in that area. The subject property is compatible with the C3 Corridor Commercial District standards. The future development must comply with all city standards, codes, and ordinances. These include landscaping, screening, lighting, and access to the site. In your previous meeting, you did, the planning commission did approve a preliminary site plan for this project. Those conditions are as follows. One, that they receive approval for that preliminary plan. The approved zoning map amendment from City Council and the Planning Commission, which we are reviewing today for the R1 to C3 zoning map amendment. The applicant must submit for site plan review based on the technical comments provided from the Planning Division, the Water for Fire Department, water, City of Pontiac Public Works, and Engineering Review. And finally, they must acquire final site plan review from the Planning Commission. This map on your screen is the map that was shared in your previous meeting regarding the site plan review. In this context, it shows the area of land that is to be rezoned to commercial and what that land will be used for. So the, the parcel to the north would be rezoned from residential. That is where they are proposing to locate their retention pond. This area would be adjacent to the residential home to the north. Between the retention pond and the corner development, they are proposing to allow for parking. So it will be rezoned from C, from R1 to C3 for parking. And then this parcel, they are not proposing to use it in the context of this plan. However, it made sense to rezone that parcel as well because it does align with the future land use plan of the city's master plan. Again, you can see the overall conceptual plan and their landscaping, their parking, the building, and the area designated for their retention pond to the north. And that concludes the zoning map amendment for 1111 Provisioning Center, ZMA 22-09.
Thank you Donovan. And Mr. Robinson, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Actually, my name's Eric Lord. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Robinson. Couldn't be here tonight. But my name's Eric Lord. I'm with Atwell LLC. We're the civil engineers and planners on the project.
Great. And your address?
Two Town Square, Southfield, Michigan, 48076.
Great. Thank you for that. Do you have anything to add to Donovan's presentation?
No, I appreciate the presentation. I thought it was very thorough and hit all the points, but I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Great, thank you. What I'm going to do is, because this is a public hearing, I'm going to open public hearing. And if anyone has a comment, I'll have them approach the microphone. When we're done with public hearing, then I will go to my fellow commissioners and they can ask the questions they may have. So I'm opening public hearing, and if there's anyone who would like to say anything, please approach the microphone. State your name and address for the record. We'll take your questions and then we will close public hearing and get your answers.
Okay. Good evening. Carlton Jones, 1323 Oaklawn Drive, Pontiac, Michigan. I just wanted to make sure I got some clarity of the conversation I heard earlier. And Donovan, you make some help with this. I think I heard Mr. Northcross saying that there was a sequence for the previously approved ones outside the, the existing district. I never knew if there was a sequence. Is that true or not? If they were outside approved, do they have to wait for the ones that's inside those districts before they can proceed? Or was there ever thought that way? I never heard that before.
Yes.
Alright, what we're gonna do is we'll take your question and then when we close public hearing, we can get the answer.
Okay, yeah. And I, you know, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on that because I did know that there, and I think that's what Tim was alluding to, that there was some that was already approved that was outside those districts. But I never heard that it was a sequence that they had to wait to those ones that's inside that district had to, before they could proceed.
I understand.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to say this.
Yes.
The planning commission, I want you all to know that I work in the field of workforce development and I'm really truly trying to engage a lot of Pontiac residents in any type of developments that's going in Pontiac. And we do have quite a few that's interested in the marijuana market. And so we want to be, see how we can make sure that we engage them properly in that process.
Great, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? I don't see that happening, so I'm going to close public comment. And I will defer the question that was asked to Donovan, because I think he's best suited to answer that question.
Thank you Chair. In regards to the comments about sequence, your question, do, do the marijuana uses located within the districts have to be approved before those outside the districts can take place? There is no sequence in regards to inside has to be approved prior to outside being approved. I believe in the context that Commissioner Northcross was sharing that information, is the objective when we came up with that scheme for that ordinance was to focus on those uses inside the overlay districts? And then based on the best practices and what we learned from those experiences, use those to better define how to go about and approve those uses outside the overlay districts. As it relates to those uses that we did approve outside the districts, those were conditional rezonings and they are adjacent to these districts. So they are outside, but they are more closely related in location to these districts. So there is two along the north, that would be the northern, northwest side of Walton Boulevard. One conditional at the intersection of Walton Boulevard and Baldwin Avenue. And then we also approved a conditional rezoning for another grow facility located just outside of the downtown overlay district on the outside of the tracks. The exact street escapes me at the moment.
It's West Lawrence.
West Lawrence, correct. Those were conditional rezonings associated with those uses. Hope that answers that question. There, there is no sequence. There was just the criteria that of the 20 provisioning centers that can be approved, five would be located within each district, downtown, Caesar Chavez, and Walton, and five would be permitted outside of those districts.
Thank you Donovan for the clarification. You know what, we're gonna go in order, so why don't we do that? Okay? Alright, so Vernita, do you have any questions? So Vernita, do you have any questions?
I do. Um, I, 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 I'm, as I guess we all are, um, kinda, I, I know that I am fascinated by so much attention drawn to this industry. Um, and, and we've gotten a lot of businesses come before us, and I just want to know what you're gonna do different. I, I want to know what's gonna set you apart from all the others. I want to know what types of enhancements or improvements you're going to um invest in our community. You know, I, I understand that this, this community is attractive to people for, for, because, you know, passed the ballot, so for obvious reasons. But I want to know what you're gonna do in our community, how you're going to invest in our community, how you're going to invest in, in, in our, in our people, as well as, as Carlton mentioned, the job force. Are you hiring specifically Pontiac people? What, tell me about those things that, that will make me really want to like you.
Yeah, I appreciate the question, and I, 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 I wish that I could answer those questions for you. Uh, I'm not gonna try to come up with something um that I think you want to hear. The reality is, is that um the owner of the project isn't here to answer those questions right now, and, and me as the consultant, the planner on the project, you know, I, I can't speak to their business operations uh for them. I guess what I, what I can tell you is that this particular owner was uh one of, if not the first, that got licensing approved through the state for these centers. I know that they have been involved in the early stages on all of these and have been uh watching and, and taking notes on other communities as they've progressed through this process. And, you know, so what you have is a very knowledgeable owner who's coming in in terms of the operation and running the operation. Um, but in terms of the specifics of hiring techniques and, and everything for this particular business, I really would have to defer to him. I, I, I don't want to say anything that I, you know, I'm not qualified.
That's unfortunate. Thank you.
All right. Michael?
First, I want to speak to the Pontiac community. Uh, the first forty-five minutes of this program, there was no audio on the live broadcast, uh, which is really unfortunate because the deliberations are important. We want the community to be able to access it no matter where they are. Uh, these are important matters, and we are doing this on behalf of our fellow citizens and our, our neighbors. So I just want to, on behalf of the city of Pontiac, since why not? Here I am, sitting. Um, on behalf of the city of Pontiac, I want to apologize to our neighbors that there was a technical um issue that prevented the audio from being heard. I have confirmation now, and I apologize, that's why momentarily you heard a bit of an audio pickup. I wanted to confirm um that it was working now, uh, so I just wanted to offer that, that housekeeping matter. The upside is that for the planning commission, we have literal transcripts that are taken. The minutes are verbatim, and that's a really powerful tool because there is a lot of nuance in the matters that we deliberate. And I could say as essentially a liaison on behalf of the elected officials for our city, that it is a, a really valuable tool as we deliberate and take the recommendations when they call for it. So in this instance, it will have to go to the city council again, and I can tell you from another matter within the last month, they literally went to the transcripts to see like what were explicitly the concerns, what were the, what was the thought process, what, what were some of the answers that elicited? So I just want to at least give the, the community that rea- reassurance that we do know verbatim uh what was deliberated, and uh if it's helpful for you to know, the first item of business uh for ZMA twenty-two dash zero eight zoning map amendment, that recommendation from the planning commission was four to one in favor of that um zoning map amendment. Uh, and so we are now at ZMA twenty-two dash zero nine zoning map amendment. This is at Walton and Jocelyn. Uh, we talked about it for a preliminary site planet review, I believe that was last month, but it could have been two months ago. So last month, uh, this uh corner is an eyesore, and that's not the um fault of the applicant or even tie directed to this question, but I can tell you that um I am very enthusiastic about this high-profile blight being eradicated in our city. And so I have asked last month and this month with staff to ensure that, and, and got reassurance about the work that the property owner is doing, to ensure that it is um barricaded and closed to trespass. That has been an issue uh where some doors were prided off, squatters, or you know, just vandals or trespassers, and so feels like that's in a stronger position. I want to let the community and my colleagues know that an application for demolition had been previously applied for even before last month. Um, and we heard that last month in our preliminary deliberations, uh, they were waiting for sign-off from Oakland County Water Resources Commission because there's soil issues and, and it, it matters in terms of demolition. Um, but I, I'm enthused that moving forward, that this high-profile blight will no longer be a scourge uh for our community. I think that, my first question is, is this in the uh Walton overlay district?
Ye- yes, it is.
And is this the first a- applicant that's come this far along in the process in the Walton overlay district?
That is correct.
Okay. And so we're talking about a provisioning center. Can you let me know, are there any other active uses or other sort of subqualifications in the medical marijuana book of business that will also be happening at this, this operation? Will it also have a growing and processing, or it's only provisioning?
Uh, this site, the applicant, has only been approved for a provisioning center license through the city clerk and has not proposed any additional medical marijuana uses um to be used in addition to um being a provisioning center.
Mr. Smith, could you please go back to a, a visual that shows the site in question, an aerial view? So, the one prior was helpful. So what we are looking at is the rezoning um from R one to C three of the highlighted red, or just that parcel to the, the left, if you will, or the west?
Uh, all, all of the parcels located within the red boundary are proposed to be rezoned from R one to C three.
Okay. What is on those three parcels currently? The applicant's representative, or you can answer, um, are we dealing with vacant land, vacant existing structures?
Um, so currently, uh, two parcels uh have homes, and the applicant can clarify if they've gone through the process of demolishing those homes, but two of them had homes at one point. Um, the parcel furthest north is vacant, and the parcel uh immediately north of the five two nine parcel is also vacant. So of the four to be rezoned, two are vacant and two have homes.
And are you in a position, Mr. Applicant Representative, to share with us uh if any of those existing uh residential structures are occupied, are vacant, are uh scheduled for demolition, and are all four parcels presently owned by Mr. Robinson or property entities of which he is the primary decision maker?
Sure. Uh, I, I don't know the answer as to whether or not, or which ones are occupied or not. I know that as part of the project, assuming the project can move forward, they would all be uh demolished and that corner cleaned up.
And if I can, through the chair, um, those parcels are all owned by the uh developer or the, the applicant. And it would be uh expected that they would be demolished if those hand, homes still exist.
Yeah. If you go back to that, the plan right before this, that showed all the landscaping and, and the detention basin and everything, that, that's all necessary for the development. One more. There you go.
So, if you could, the one that you just had, Mr. Smith, um, with the landscaping, et cetera, could you share for us what would neighbors, those patronizing other businesses in the vicinity, so the dark gray area, would that be new parking? And there's an island in the parking vicinity, is that grass or landscaped?
Uh, no, the area in the middle is parking, the sort of kinda darker area would just be the maneuvering lanes for the parking lot.
Understood. Thank you for that clarification. So the, the, the southernmost structure, that would be closest to the uh northwest corner of Jocelyn and Walton. Essentially, uh, it would replace what will be demolished, which is that long rotting vacant gr- former uh gas station eyesore, correct?
That is correct.
And how many square feet is proposed for that structure?
Um. Donovan, I don't know if you happen to have that number in front of you. I don't have that in front of me, but-
Can that question be repeated, please?
I'm interested in the square feet, or what would be um the end product of how large that uh commercial structure would be at the intersection? And so to the, the north and the west, uh, is that landscaping, or is there also a structure to the far north of this parcel?
That's all, that's all landscaping on the west side, and in fact, um, you know, you can see on the north side is the detention basin there.
Ah, got it.
Void area there, surrounded by landscaping, and then the parcel on the west side uh is all landscaping as well. So you have a nice buffer from the parking lot and the building over to, you know, the transition to residential from there.
And then finally, a comment, and feel free if you track that down, if you want to throw that in the mix.
And through the chair, just to answer the question, that uh was not provided in the zoning map amendment. Um, it will, if you review the previous items, uh, the previous packets, it will probably most likely be in the site plan-
Understood.
In that preliminary, yes.
Understood. Thank you for that. So, and, and finally, a comment. Much of downtown Pontiac today, the buildings from the eighteen sixties, eighteen seventies, all the way up to the early nineteen hundreds, a lot of them are for uses or businesses that we wouldn't recognize today, and we definitely wouldn't uh patronize or frequent. We have no need for saddle makers or horseshoers or stables to store our horses, but it is those industries that led to the building of nationally significant historic structures that add to a lot of the character of our downtown commercial district. And then, of course, there's other examples of that. I mean, we have a hundred-year anniversary of the Strand Theater. That was built for Vaudeville before there was even Talking Pictures. It was about live performances. Then they transitioned to that. They had their fun as an adult film theater before being closed for a few decades. So they're definitely different. I'm not celebrating that, I'm just pointing for the record that there are a lot of evolutions of industries. Uh, I'm interested in Pontiac getting as much planning and infrastructure and development value to benefit our residents and future commercial uses, whether your business opens for one day or twenty years, uh, because then that structure, and I don't mean to be dismissive, but then that structure and that improvement and what's now a blighted and, and neglected area uh will be tangibly improved for residents, other businesses that are nearby or could come in the future and could occupy that site as well. So I'm certainly not advocating for your failure, I, or the entity in which you are the representative for this evening, um, but I do look at many of the decisions that come before us through that lens, because I know that businesses come and go. Many, many businesses last for a few seasons or for a few years. It's a very difficult field, and so we, I think a lot of us know about those rates. Um, so I'm making some of my decisions through the vantage point about what will dramatically improve the landscape, the infrastructure, and, and the terrain from a business and, and residential perspective, and I definitely think that uh rezoning these particular parcels and facilitating this particular development would be a massive gain for the commercial corridor of Walton, for Jocelyn Avenue, for the surrounding businesses, and those that have to every day look at what currently is an eyesore. So no matter what comes next, I want to thank Mr. Robinson for the demolition application and what I look forward to be a successful demolition of what's been a blighted structure for a decade, probably at this point decades. I mean, I can remember at least seventeen years, which is really unacceptable, and I'm sorry that residents that live in that area and other businesses have had to contend with that for so long, because it's really dragged down uh what could have been positive growth for the Walton Boulevard corridor and surrounding neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Northcross, please.
If I may, through the chair, uh, just to add on to some of the comments Commissioner McGinnis uh made in regards to the audio and the feed, um, just for residents that were unable or did miss moments or segments of the first forty-five minutes or so of the uh meeting, uh, the presentation or the um, the meeting as a whole will be available on the city's website um to be reviewed uh starting tomorrow, and it will have the entire audio. So you can go back and review the audio. In addition to, uh, if there are users that experienced a, a drop in feed on Facebook, that was to reset uh the audio and video. Um, so I did receive communication from the media department that that was corrected and updated. Um, so again, if you did miss segments, you can watch that on the city's website, on the Facebook feed, as well as in the lobby downstairs. It will be on display um with the audio that was missing.
To add to that, how long are those, are planning commission meetings, how long are they on the city website, do you know?
The meetings are on the website until the next meeting.
So for a month, they-
For, for one month, yes. The transcripts um will can stay on the website, so once they are uploaded, they will continue to stay on the website.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Northcross, please.
Thank you. Yes, I, I too am looking forward to that section of Walton being redeveloped. I think it's a good step forward. I, I, I think your plans are reasonable, um, given what we know, and I think it's a good step forward. Um, just, just to move over to the side, though, looking back, I believe our medical marijuana um ordinance, I believe that was uh approved, what, uh, in two thousand nineteen, I believe it was?
It was, uh, through the chair, either the beginning of two thousand nineteen um or right at the end of two thousand eighteen, but I, I think you are correct. It was somewhere in the first two quarters of two thousand nineteen.
And, and we've um experienced a number of things that, you know, over the years, uh, good and bad, that were unforeseen as we stepped into medical marijuana in terms of trying to regulate and, and provide for that to occur. And here we are, uh, two thousand twenty-two, with yours being the first facility here to, to get this far, to, to really apply. Um, my comments before, um, in terms of there being a firm sequence, uh, there was not a firm sequence. I understand that. I believe it was an understanding, uh, my understanding, that yes, we would start with uh provisioning facilities, other types of facilities being built first in that medical marijuana overlay district, then uh as, as the uh additional licenses came due and were uh available, we could make decisions upon where and how and when to place those. From my sta- from my um understanding and my viewpoint, the fact that there are public hearings and um review by the planning commission, additional things required, says that yes, it's not a slam dunk, even though there may be five out there. The, the actual placement of each of the five should reflect uh some input from the community with their concerns about what's going on. And at this point in time, we haven't had any, and to provide that input i- is very difficult for the community. I, I think the plans that have been brought to us are, are solid plans as far as we know. It's just that i- it's additional risk and uh, my feeling that it's an additional risk in other things that uh we're, we're looking at uh as we step outside of the medical marijuana districts that may not materialize. It might not be valid. Could be though. That we should really focus on the medical marijuana districts first, if we can, and that's something that's not entirely just in our preview. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts that go together to, to allow a person to uh say, hey, I'm at a point where I want to pull this license and I want to put this in, put, put all of this uh uh material and people and planning and everything in, in, in place and, and put a building up. But um, my thought is that the medical marijuana districts, we should really focus on getting items up and running in those districts first, if we can, before we branch out. That's it. That's it. It's kind of simple. It's kind of, i- i- is, is, uh, you know, not rocket science. I just think that um if we have one area that we've agreed on and a number of areas that are still up in the air that we have not- and a number of areas that are still up in the air that we have not agreed on, focus on those areas that we do agree on, which I think will allow us to have a better vision and understanding of exactly what we're doing on those areas that were outside of the area that we agreed on, what, what those facilities will look like and how they'll operate in those areas that we had not agreed on. Simple, straightforward. That's, that's just my thoughts. So glad to see you coming to that area. I will be closely watching for what else occurs as you go through this adventure of putting up that facility and getting it running and how it works with the surrounding areas.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher? Tim, anything you'd like to add?
Just a couple of quick things. And if I may, again, with, with all due respect, we don't get a chance to change this. We don't get a chance to pick the sites for this. This has all been done. So there were 100 applications, 20 were selected for a location. They weren't selected for a license. They were selected for their location. They can't pick it up and move it. So this gentleman can't move it to another corner that we would have rather have it at down the road. So I don't know if that was clear during the, when you guys were going through the planning process, but when it all came together, that was kind of how it ended up. So we don't get a choice. We don't get a choice to say who gets to open first and who gets to open last. The, the smart ones are the ones that do it first. If you're open first, you might win in this game. It is a tough game. And, and, and I think if we could go back in time, we would just make it an unlimited deal. Because the market decides this stuff. You know, I think everyone thinks that they should set a number on it. We don't do that with restaurants. You know, the market will determine, 20 were selected, I would guess maybe 10 open, right? I mean, I think the market's going to take care of that because now they're everywhere. We're, we're late to the game. So now they're, they're all over the place and we've kind of missed our early start. So, so that was, that was all I wanted to say, and I, and I appreciate your concern. It, it does make sense. But right now, we're here for zoning. So we are not here to tell them what we want. I mean, they're going to come back with a site plan that we get, and we're going to ask you, or I'm going to ask you, bring something great. You know, we don't want to see something, and I don't, I know you won't because there's too much money invested in this stuff, but it's got to look great. That is a heck of a corner. I drive by it almost every day. And I, just like Mr. McGinnis here, I, I look at it's an ISO. I mean, it's something that people look at when they come into Pontiac, and it's one of the first things they see if they're coming southbound. So, but right now, we're just, and, and from what I can see, the houses that are there, we're not tearing down something historic. They're not, they're not nice houses. These are, these are okay to take out. I think that's part of the process. So, so I think that's, and I don't know when you're going to bring the site plan back. The other thing that I hope we all understand is that, and you can tell me if I'm wrong on your property, but most people that develop a piece of property like this, they ask for some kind of a tax abatement. They go for a brownfield. This is a contaminated piece of property, I'm assuming. So I don't think you can get a brownfield in a cannabis situation, but maybe I'm wrong. But, but they would be asking for an Oprah or something that they don't have to pay taxes on. And as far as I know, every cannabis group that I've talked to, they, they don't get that. So anyone else that comes into the city, they get that. So this is, this is maybe an extra $50,000 a year in tax because just for property taxes. I don't, I don't know the real numbers, but let's say 30 to 50,000 a year in just taxes. Plus all the taxes they got to pay through the state that comes funneling back to us. So I think we all need to understand that, you know, they, they've been put up against the wall. And now the prices are so bad that it's hard to, it's hard to make any money for these guys, which is also why we're not going to probably see 20 of these open up. But, but we're also not going to be, and we don't get to determine who gets brownfield and who gets these tax abatements, but it's not an ask for most of these guys. I just hope we all understand that. I mean, the amount of money coming in on a property that probably pays a couple thousand dollars a year right now in property taxes, it'll be 30 to 50,000, I guess. That's all I got. Thank you.
Commissioner, I've, I've thought of another question. Let me know.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
So Commissioner Shepard jogged this question out of my brain. So the top parcel is presently vacant, correct? Do we know, was that another residential structure or a past commercial structure? And do we know what type of facility or use it was? I imagine that might not be readily known, but through some due diligence, is that something that the applicant's representative is aware of? So we know that, at least for the rezoning, two are, we're talking about residential properties, so it's pretty straightforward. The big Kahuna on the question, the corner is, you know, gas station. That's, they've got pretty strict and highly monitored remediation that, that may be required or maybe has already been done many moons ago. But Mr. Smith, is the city readily aware of how long that parcel's been vacant or what other uses have been? And that's something that obviously you can come to an answer at a future gathering, but it's just one that's occurred to me as we're thinking about the condition of the site. And since that one's vacant, it's not as presently known if there's been recent development or how long ago what was the use of the land.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner McGinnis. While at the moment, we, we, we would be able to go back and verify if a home did exist on that parcel. However, because it is zoned residential, it, it is likely that a home could have existed on it. However, it is heavily wooded, which is usually an indication that it was not developed nor the land was cleared for the construction of a home. But we can always further verify the history of that specific parcel.
That's helpful insight. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome. And I have no questions. I appreciate the information that you brought to us again this evening. So I am ready for a motion.
Okay. Well, I'll give it a try.
All right, very good.
Okay. Per the zoning requirement found in Section 6.804 of the zoning ordinance, planning division's technical review and findings, I make a motion to recommend approval of ZMA 22-09. The recommendation would be presented, let's see, I got the right one? Yeah. The recommendation would be presented to city council for approval that the request of 1-1:11 Provisioning Center to rezon partial number 64-14-09-377-015 and -016 and -017. I should have said comma, but. from R1 Family Dwelling and C3 Quarter Commercial.
I need support.
I have support.
All right, we are ready for roll call, Donovan.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Parloff?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Duval?
Yes, to approve, and I, and I, and I have some comments if I, if I may, as a caveat to my approval. I, I do want you, your owner, Mr. Robinson, to know that those, that question I had about enhancements to our community, investments in our community and job hiring process is, are valid. And I would like for him to come back with that.
We'll certainly pass that along. Thank you.
But yes, to approve. Thank you, Bernita.
Thank, thank you.
And thank you, Tim, for clarifying.
Commissioner McGinnis?
Yes, to approve.
And Commissioner Northcross?
Yes, to approve. One item, the last sentence, the portion of it reads from R1 Family Dwelling, and I said, "and" C1 Quarter Commercial. That should be?
Two.
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 Correct.
Excuse me. I did three. Two C3 Quarter Commercial.
That is correct.
Okay.
And Chair, the motion passes for approval for ZMA 22-09.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome. All right. We are now going to be working on some old business. Our next item is, well, we've got two things together for this particular applicant. We have SPR 22-19. It's a preliminary site plan review. We also have a ZMA 22-04, which is a conditional zoning map amendment. This is for the parcel that sits on two corners, the address of 645 South Old Telegraph Road and the adjoining parcel that's at 1056 Golf Drive. So I will have Donovan do his presentation, and then we will go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was this additional?
This is additional.
It's the same thing. It just came from the applicant.
All right. Thank you, Chair. The, let me get caught up here. All right, our old business item, so we are out of public hearings. Our old business item is SPR 22-19 Preliminary Site Plan Review and ZMA 22-04 Conditional Zoning Map Amendment for the address 645 South Old Telegraph and 1056 Golf Drive, parcels 641431381027, parcel 641431458-10. The applicant, Gettrugrins LLC, is requesting a conditional rezoning to rezon parcels from C1 and Local Business and P1 Parking to M1 Light Manufacturing, a rezoning with conditions. The applicant proposes to redevelop the parcel into a medical marijuana grower and processor facility. A medical marijuana grower and processor is not allowed outside of the medical marijuana overlay districts and is permitted in the M1 Light Manufacturing District, which is why they are requesting this type of rezoning. So briefly, regarding the M1 Light Manufacturing District, the intent of this district is to provide specific locations for public and, oh, I'm sorry, this is the wrong one. There are specific requirements related to performance standards outlined in Chapter 7 of the ordinance in regards to uses that do take place within that district. The two that more directly are related to this project are Section 4.701 Airborne Emissions. And these performance standards does give the city enforcement over various components of nuisances that uses in these districts can create. So the first will be airborne emissions, where it will be unlawful for any person, firm or corporation to emit or create any smoke or air contamination in violation of applicable air quality standards adopted by the Federal Clean Air Act and Michigan Department of Natural Resources and Environment, which is now Eagle. And then Section 4.702 Odors, any conditional operation which results in the creation of odors of such intensity and character as to be detrimental to the health and welfare of the public or which interferes unreasonably with the comfort of the public shall be removed, stopped, or so modified as to remove the odors. Such odors shall be prohibited when perceivable at any point along the property line. Those are the two criteria of Chapter 7 that speak directly to these uses. However, there are additional criteria that include gases, noise and vibration, electrical, electromagnetic, and radio interference and frequencies, glare, hazardous substances, fire and explosives, property maintenance, liquid and solid waste. So these are all performance standards outlined in Chapter 7 that must be complied with for uses inside the M1 Light Manufacturing District. So as you can see on the zoning map, you can see those parcels outlined in the red shape here. The light pink parcels are C1 Local, where the pink parcels are P1 Parkle, P1 Parking. The applicant is proposing to rezon all of these parcels to M1 Light Manufacturing. The intent of this district is to provide suitable location for small to moderate sized industrial uses. The district provides for manufacturing beyond simple assembly. The further intent is to encourage and facilitate the development of industrial enterprises in a setting conducive to the public health, promote economic stability, facilitate continued use of older industrial buildings to prevent blight and deterioration, also to prevent encroachment by non-industrial uses and to facilitate efficient traffic movement. So you can also see, similar to the first item, that first rezoning and property is actually located here. Again, we have the large array of residential parcels, C4 Suburban Commercial across the street. And then kitty corner, there are some additional M1 uses or M1 zoned areas. When look, we look at the future land use map, that, those parcels are designated offices, hospital, healthcare for future land uses. And these uses are defined as supportive expansion projects offered by the four hospitals located in the city and encourage additional healthcare and office use to create what the ordinance, or the master plan calls a healthcare hub, providing both community healthcare and job training for healthcare workers. So the future land use map does make a very strong attempt to categorize the type of uses that would be permitted within that area as office, hospital and healthcare uses. The medical marijuana facilities do not achieve the objectives of the master plan as it relates directly to the future land use. When we look at some of the staff findings and history of the site, some of these items were shared in a previous meeting. In 2018, the planning commission did approve a site plan for medical office and event center that was not further developed or completed. In September of 2020, the planning commission did recommend denial to city council for a similar rezoning for the parcel 641431381027. I believe that was for, in a different medical marijuana use. A public hearing was held August 3, 2022. This was for this item, a conditional rezoning. The commission did vote to table that item until a following meeting. This is that meeting. Also, in that same August 3 meeting, the planning commission did review the preliminary site plan. A vote was not granted for that item. It was tabled. Adjacent properties to the west of the subject site are zoned C1 Local Business, C4 Regional Commercial or Suburban Commercial, and M2 Heavy Manufacturing. To the north and east, the parcels are zoned R1 One Family Dwelling. As it relates to the master plan, this project does achieve what would be eliminated and underutilized blighted parcel and condemned buildings. The buildings on 645 were condemned and awaiting clearance in 2016 by the zoning, or not the zoning, the Board of Appeals. And no action has been taken since from that board, just for note. Additional findings, the proposed development is required to comply with the buffer distance requirements of the Medical Marijuana Overlay District for license approval, which will be facilitated through the city clerk's office if this rezoning is approved, where they must be 500 feet from schools, daycares, religious institutions, and parks of recreation. And then lastly, any future development must comply with all city standards, codes, ordinances and procedures such as landscaping, screening, lighting and access. As this is a conditional rezoning, the applicant has provided conditions that are outlined in your packet. And these conditions cannot be changed or altered and must be offered voluntarily of the applicant. And I will briefly go through these conditions. One is to agree to rezon the property from C1 and P1 to M1 to permit the proposed medical marijuana grow and processing facility. The owner agrees to obtain site plan approval for the proposed development within 24 months of the effective date of the ordinance. of the effective date of the ordinance amendment being approved. This will be the, uh, city council approval date. Uh, such site plan approved by the city planning commission shall become the final binding, uh, development plan for the, for the project. And the approved final site plan would be valid for a total of twenty-four months. And the owner agrees, um, is responsible to request any extensions as necessary, um, from the board. The owner agrees to complete the project within forty-eight months of obtaining building permits. Uh, the owner establishes the proposed development on the property and shall continuously maintain and operate the proposed development in accordance with all zoning, rezoning conditions of this agreement and the zoning ordinance. And failure to satisfy those conditions, uh, could render the, uh, agreement void and in violation. Um, if the owner fails to meet the time limits set forth in the agreement, um, and, or if the city notifies the write-in writing that it is no longer intended to develop the property, and this is from the applicant, the zoning of the property will revert back to its original C-one and P-one zoning classifications. Uh, the rezoning conditions sa- shall not be changed or altered during the time period, um, without, um, approval of the city and the applicant. This agreement shall be binding, um, and shall be recorded upon execution of the agreement with the Oakland County Register of Deeds. And then lastly, um, regarding amendments, no amendment shall be made again, um, without, um, agreement between the, uh, the applicant and the city, and those amendments shall also be recorded. And then the conditions imposed by this agreement have been voluntarily offered by the owner. Um, and the owner has elected not, and if the owner elects not to develop the property with the proposed development, uh, the rights under the zoning enabling act, the zoning ordinance, the city code and ordinances and other applicable s- laws of the state shall not be affected. Um, those are the conditions that agreement is outlined in your packet. And, uh, if this item is approved, those conditions and the agreement would move forward to city council for review and approval. Uh, in regards to the rezoning criteria and, and what must be in compliance to, uh, recommend for approval for a rezoning, uh, we briefly described the master plan. Um, the proposed medical marijuana grow and processor uses are not consistent with the goals and policies of the city's master plan, so it does not comply. Um, since the early nineteen sixties, the site has been developed, um, and the, uh, geological, hydrological and environmental features have, uh, been lost. Um, so the site does comply as we do not threaten, um, those features that may or no longer exist. It is hard to determine if the applicant can provide sufficient es- evidence that they could not develop the property as a medical office complex with an event center based on the site plan approval, um, of two thousand eighteen thirty-seven, um, by the planning commission, um, in November of two thousand eighteen. Um, some building improvements and site improvements were completed, however, a certificate of occupancy has not been issued. Um, regarding the planned development in the M-one manufacturing district, the CR conditional rezoning limits select manufacturing uses and would not be compatible with the houses and services with the business services and offices. Um, in the, in addition to the nearby residential neighborhoods in this section of South Old Telegraph and, and will impact and influence the development patterns, land suitability, aesthetics and property values of the immediate surrounding area. Um, the existing city utilities and services would be sufficient for the proposed use. The proposed development would not impact Orchard Lake Road, uh, South Old Telegraph intersection and roadways in a way uh, where they would not be able to handle the potential frequent delivery and customer traffic. However, the two-lane road of Golf Drive, which is a major east-west collector, may impact, uh, access by residential neighborhoods. The boundaries of the rezoning with conditions is not reasonable in relationship to nearby residential neighborhoods and does not meet the intent of regulations in the M-one zoning district. The hundred-foot depth of the site and locations of existing buildings will be in close proximity to residential units. Um, the conditional rezoning request is not appropriate from the city's pers- perspective and the existing C-one local business district should remain. Um, and the last two here, it would be inappropriate to amend the existing C-one local business district to permit, uh, limited light manufacturing uses and the rezoning is not considered to be more appropriate than amending that district. This conditional rezoning, uh, would create an isolated M-one manufacturing zoning district within the South Old Telegraph Road corridor frontage, um, south of Orchard Lake Road. Um, and then lastly, if the rezoning and conditions are approved, the applicant would be, uh, required to obtain a medical marijuana license for each use from the city, city clerk's office and the state of Michigan. Um, in addition, they will be required to complete a final site plan, uh, for approval from the planning commission. And then, uh, briefly, in regards to some of the preliminary site plan review findings, uh, we reviewed in the previous August meeting. Um, the proposed medical marijuana grow and processor uses are not permitted at the subject location um, and would require a zoning map amendment and special exemption program, uh, special exemption permit. The preliminary technical site plan review does conditionally meet the requirements for preliminary approval. Um, the following conditions are required or would be required for final site plan approval. A completed and approved zoning map amendment for R-one light manufacturing approved by the planning commission and city council. Um, the site plan must be resubmitted for final site plan review and approval from the city engineering, planning division, waterf- and Waterford Fire Department. Um, they must acquire fi- final site plan approval and special exemption approval from the planning commission. And then lastly, they must acquire all necessary use licenses from the city clerk's office. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you Donovan. I see we have a person at the podium, I'm assuming it's our applicant, so if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, uh, chairperson, uh, my name is Frank Kerr. Uh, my address is one oh one West Big Beaver, Troy, Michigan, fourteenth floor, four eight zero eight four. I'm actually the attorney for the applicant. Um, the applicant, Mr. Siriyo, cannot be here this evening, he has, uh, some medical, uh, treatment requirements that has taken him out of the state for, for his care. Um, he is, uh, able to participate this evening, he's watching and participating through the live feed. Um, he wishes he could be here, but unfortunately, due to his personal needs, he's not able to be here this evening.
Okay, thank you for that. Did you say your name is Brent?
Frank Kerr K E.
Thank you, it sounded like Brent to me.
That's okay.
Thank you. Okay, uh, do you have anything you would like to add to Donovan's presentation?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, when we were here last in August, which by the way, today is a much nicer day, if you remember, it was raining cats and dogs that day. Um, uh, just for the record, um, I did, uh, at that time, present, uh, our rebuttals to the rezoning, uh, the analysis of the rezoning criteria. Um, I don't know if it's necessary to go back through those again, since those are part of the record. Um, there was, uh, public comment at the time that, uh, was favorable, in my estimation, to, uh, approval of the application. Uh, there was, uh, a, a very, uh, in-depth and thoughtful discussion among the, uh, commission members as to the proposed, uh, the proposal put forth. And, uh, in particular, uh, in the time since then, uh, those, uh, uh, comments and questions and recommendations uh, were taken to heart and action was taken on those. Um, in particular, uh, there were, um, uh, some, uh, some, uh, Scrivener's errors on the conditional rezoning agreement, uh, that were highlighted in the previous meeting that have since been addressed and resubmitted, uh, in a corrected, uh, format, uh, to the planning department for review along with, uh, city legal as to form. Uh, we did not get any comments back as to any concerns as to form on the, uh, corrected conditional rezoning agreement. Um, also during the planning commission, uh, there were, uh, helpful recommendations given, uh, to come back with, uh, some more, uh, updated refreshed renderings as to what the, uh, site could look like. Um, my client has worked with his architect to come up with some renderings which had first been presented this evening to the commission, uh, members, uh, in the packages that, uh, were handed out earlier. Um, and, uh, also, one of the recommendations at that time was, uh, just, uh, asking, uh, for some further, uh, transparency in terms of a proposed budget for the development of the site. Uh, in that package as well, uh, presented to the, uh, commission persons is a, uh, capital investment budget. Um, one of the things I wanted to point out in that budget is that, uh, if you break down what I will call the, uh, front-facing, uh, uh, portion of that investment, there's over seven hundred thousand dollars that is being proposed, um, in forward-facing or front-facing uh, improvements of the property, including additional improvements of the masonry, um, doors, uh, exterior building improvements, uh, the parking lot to be completely replaced, signage. So of the three point two million dollars that are currently budgeted for this project, about seven hundred thousand dollars of that would actually be, uh, visible to the public and, uh, would, uh, add to the improvements that have already been made to the property. Um, in addition, uh, one of the things, uh, I just wanted to point out as well, uh, and it was discussed to some extent at the last meeting, um, is that with the, uh, proposed use of the property, um, it would also not only bring, um, embellishments to, uh, the forward-facing, um, uh, view of the building, which is, uh, right now, um, quite kind of an entrance to Pontiac, uh, for those coming from a southerly route. Uh, but as well, um, will add to increased, uh, security, um, to that site, uh, not only by bringing employees and business to the location, um, but also, uh, in order to meet, uh, uh, applicable, uh, regulations regarding the proposed use uh, would require the building to be, um, actively monitored for security, uh, both electronically and with personnel. Um, and as well, part of the capital improvement budget proposed in the package, uh, includes, uh, modifications and updates to parking lot lighting and building lighting, which would also add to the security, um, of the building. Um, and lastly, uh, as one of the commissioners, um, uh, suggested, and especially as I, uh, also, uh, was brought up in the, in an earlier discussion for one of the other proposals, uh, this is a very competitive market, um, only getting more competitive. And, uh, my client, um, has, uh, signed an NDA, uh, with a, uh, a very successful, uh, cannabis group um, that has done other projects here in Michigan successfully and is, uh, exploring, uh, a collaborative approach with a, uh, experienced cannabis group here in Michigan, uh, to, to, uh, add to his, uh, successful business, um, experience to, to make this, uh, a successful enterprise here in Pontiac. Um, and finally, as, uh, this, uh, city is now looking to, um, uh, uh, move forward with, uh, the, the, uh, medical marijuana provisioning centers, I think there would be an added benefit, uh, at, uh, at having a grow and processing facility of this nature in Pontiac, hopefully keeping as much of the business, um, in this marketplace uh, contained within Pontiac, uh, to benefit the city of Pontiac and the residents.
Thank you for that information. Um, I am going to start going through questions that my commissioners will have, my fellow commissioners. So I will start with Vernita.
I, I think I was clear pretty much the last time, I, I, you know, I guess we're all kind of welcoming these marijuana centers to a certain extent. Um, just want to make sure that your investment in the community is, is prosperous, uh, that your hiring practices are within the city, um, that that's a standard that you'll follow. And I just, I welcome, I mean, we, we want business to prosper and grow, but we want to grow with it.
I appreciate that.
Those are my comments.
Thank you. Michael.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To staff, uh, this is, uh, for the zoning map amendment and the preliminary site plan review. For the conditional zoning map amendment, a public hearing was held in August, so that satisfies that requirement.
Correct.
On a final site plan review, when that comes before this body, are we able to place conditions on the site plan? Or is that, uh, limited because of the conditional zoning map amendment approach? Meaning, here's what the applicant has offered for the conditions for the zoning. Um, if you could help me understand what further tools we have, because for example, in the rendering, um, it might not be visible um, to those at home, but it shows that, um, there would be a, a welcome to Pontiac sign that would be erected, for example, uh, for those traveling northbound on Old South Telegraph. Is it fair to say that that would be something we could add as a condition of the site plan? Not really pertinent to the zoning, but where it would be sort of mutually agreed upon that the site plan, final site plan approvals contingent on amenities such as that or other site plan features in terms of enhanced landscaping? It's a, it's a visually important, uh, location for the city overall strategically. But then also, I'm, I'm really going to be cognizant about the proximity to residents, as we have with other sites. Um, but this is going to be, you know, when it comes to the final site plan review, can you let me know what tools we have as a planning commission, um, to strengthen that final site plan?
Yes, that is a, a, a very good question, Commissioner McGinnis and through the chair. Um, as a part of the conditional rezoning, we do not have the ability to add conditions. However, um, within the purview of those criteria within the site plan, um, you do have the ability to make, uh, conditions, um, recommendations, suggestions, um, within the scope of, uh, site plan approvable criteria such as signage, um, materials, access, um, layout, screening, landscaping. Um, so, uh, to summarize that, your question, yes, in the final site plan at that meeting, you will have the opportunity to kind of weigh in, um, additional, uh, requirements or conditions that you would like to be approved with that site plan.
But it would be within the framework of the conditional zoning?
As, as long as it does not conflict with the conditional rezoning, you would have that privilege, yes.
Understood. And, oh, oh.
My microphone is off, I apologize. So, um, I'm pleased to hear that through the final site plan review that would come in the future, we would have tools at the city's disposal to add further enhancement requirements, as long as they don't conflict with the, um, conditions, um, that would be agreed upon. Now, I want to confirm, there's an existing surface level parking lot and then there's an existing zoned parking lot on Dover that's essentially a, a grass field right now. But that is not what is at question with the rezoning, correct? What is already parking, even if it's not actively used or zoned as parking, including that parcel on Dover, it will remain as parking, so that's the blue, correct?
Co- correct. The area of the parcels, um, just south of Dover, zone P-one would remain P-one and are not being proposed to be rezoned to M-one. Only those parcels with frontage on Golf Drive and Old Telegraph, um, the C-one and the, uh, P-one to the east are proposed for M-one.
And, uh, I think this is my final question, so let's say the applicant, um, ultimately, uh, gets approval from the city council on the M-one light manufacturing with conditions. And then if it's not adhered to or the, you know, conditions that they agreed to are not met, essentially, that conditional rezoning reverts to C-one local business, correct?
That is correct.
And if, if another, let's say the business is sold to an, or property is sold, would another property owner be able to sort of assume, pick up, write up where the, that former applicant left off? left off? Or would essentially, would that hit the reset button as well, change in ownership?
Through the chair, it, it would effectively hit the reset button, as the properties would revert back to C1 and M1. Any uses that follow would also have to go through a, another round of rezoning, a public hearing, and the full gambit to be permitted.
And so the decision that was made in 2018 that zoned at C1 local business, that was not conditional, that was a straight up rezoning that was done?
Correct.
What was it previously zoned as?
The, it was currently zoned, C1. I believe it was, it was also for M1, but the request was not to rezon the entire boundary of the parcels. It was actually just to rezon the parcels related to one of the buildings. So it was the similar request, almost the same request, however, it was just not as large.
Okay. And what we're talking about are both structures, correct? One is on Golf Drive with a Golf Drive address, another is on Old Telegraph, but it's a sort of a pretty long structure. That's considered one property, that one, that long structure that's essentially the most dormant, the Old Telegraph building?
Correct.
So that's one attached contiguous building, or at least connected in a way that's considered one structure. Okay. So we, what are, what's under consideration is the Old Telegraph building and the Golf Drive building. I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Christopher?
Well, again, the objections that I've raised earlier, they continue to have those objections, so I'll just stop there. Listen to my fellow colleagues.
Great, thank you. Tim, please.
Well, I'm going to hit replay on you on the conversation, because the reality is, is this is one that was not approved. So this is not one that was, the 20 that were approved, this is a totally different situation, so I, I'm with you. I, I think it's a, it's a unique one. I appreciate everything you guys have done. It's, it's, I think when we typically get to a scenario like this where we take something to an M1, it's because it can't, nothing else can be done with it. And I appreciate the fact that maybe you guys have tried some stuff and it hasn't worked, but it's such a great corridor. You've got it, your Bloomfield Hills is just a few blocks. I mean, it's, it's right there. This is not some hor, I mean, we've approved this in industrial areas that are just kind of, I don't remember whether one of Lawrence, if that was industrial or not, but that was an area that was just a, a site that couldn't be developed, you couldn't do anything else with it. My view is that's not the case on this property. I have my own personal thoughts on, on, you know, he can run a cannabis, it's, I'm not here to say what somebody should run or what they shouldn't run.
Sure.
It doesn't make sense to me, but Mr. Northcross made a point earlier, what, actually, it was Mr. McGinnis, if these businesses don't work, all right, and, and you know, he said about the provisioning center earlier, if these businesses don't work, you know, what happens, what happens to property? Now, that's his, his loss, he spends a lot of money, and, and, and I'm gonna, I'll just kind of go a little bit, and then I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Sure.
So I'm very pro-business. I love seeing people develop properties. I'm the one that asked for renderings. This is not what I was thinking, but that's, maybe I wasn't clear on what I was thinking. If, if something's going to be zoned into a way like this, it better look spectacular from the outside, because it doesn't fit with the other stuff. You have a, a, a great little vet clinic across the street. You've got a lot of things right in that area that if we were pushed into another area, I think it might be a different conversation, but again, I'm, I appreciate what he's doing, and I know he's tried some medical ideas, but I don't know if it's gone far enough on that.
Sure. No, I appreciate those. Do you mind if I?
I'm, I'm fine if the chair approves.
Sure.
Go for it.
Thank you very much. No, I appreciate those comments. A few things, just getting back to Mr. McGinnis's line of questioning, this would come back for his final site plan approval, and I think at that time it would be appropriate to expect, and I'm certain my client would provide more detailed renderings, drawings, you know, we're at kind of a point right now where he has to measure the willing, willingness of the city to allow him to take the next step, and, and, and factor in costs.
By the way, I appreciate that, the fact that he doesn't want to spend a bunch of money on something right now when he doesn't know where we're going with this. So I, I understand why these are not.
Sure. And, and so you do understand, given Mr. McGinnis's line of questioning and Mr. Smith's responses, that the city would still have an opportunity to, to tap the brakes on this, if it's not satisfied with the direction that this plan is going. In terms of, you know, and I understand, you know, I appreciate you saying, well, you know, if this doesn't work, well, then that's his loss, but, but I, I think that's not, I'm not as, my response to that isn't as perhaps as jaded. You know, I think that, first of all, if we looked at this, while we need to classify it as M1 for this limited purpose, and again, this was discussed in the previous meeting, that it is only for a marijuana grow and processing center.
It would revert back.
Right. We can't put CNC presses or other light manufacturing operations in this building. So while technically it needs to be classified as M1, it's very narrowly limited to this. The way the building would need to be improved in order to accommodate this type of use would bring this building into, into the 21st century, in terms of not only its exterior aesthetics, but its interior improvements, heating and cooling, you know, if this ever had to be used as a, as any other use, you'd probably have the best heating and cooling system in Pontiac in that building. Electrical, plumbing, I mean, you name it, fire suppression, everything. So if this building needed to be turned around and used for something else, it would be very amenable for another use besides this. And if we were to look at this, and again, we're, I know we're talking M1 and the stigmatism that goes along with that, but if we consider this to be, if my client was coming in saying, look, we have, you know, a medical lab that wants to come in here and, and do laboratory testing for, you know, blood and urinalysis and things like this, and so we need to get an approval for this tenant. Or if we were to look at this as some sort of, you know, pharmaceutical development, I mean, these would be uses in this property that would be very, I think, commensurate with that type of space, and nothing on the exterior is going to say medical marijuana grow and, you know, grow and processing, so it's not.
Which, by the way, I have nothing against.
Well, I have nothing against neither, but what I'm saying is, for the person passing by, they wouldn't know, you know, if it's a farm lab, a pharmaceutical lab, or, or blood and, and, and a medical laboratory, or anything like that. But again, to your question, Mr. Shepherd, I think that where the city stands is, is if this business is not successful, this building would be, would be, as Mr. McGinnis was pointing out earlier, the type of building that could continue to serve and service the community of Pontiac for many years to come. It's not, it wouldn't be of such a narrow use or design that it could not be easily adapted to some other, other use.
So I'm not against the idea by any means. What, what I am against is, and you've clarified some stuff for me, okay? The fact that it looked, the pictures that I'm seeing right now are basically exactly what it is. So I don't see a, a reason, I don't see an improvement on the property. Now, you're right, it has to come to, for site plan approval. So we, we do have more of a say at that point, but if he's coming back with the same thing, I think it would, it would be very hard for me to go along with that. And I, and I, and you did make another point, and I appreciate it, that this does not stay M1, and, and I remembered, I just kind of, I forgot that idea, but we normally would not want M1, well, you know this, we don't want M1 in a, in a, in a prime corridor like that. But if it reverts back at the end of this, if things don't work, and the building has been improved, I, I'm with you on that idea, but we have to see some pretty nice improvements. And I don't see it here, right? And I, and, but I also appreciate the fact he doesn't want to spend the money on this if he's not at that place yet. I mean, that's a lot of money to make this look pretty, so.
I do, I don't mean to be, I hope I'm not speaking out of place, but were you to vote for approval of this, I would not expect you to approve this if it came back to you looking like this for a final site plan approval.
I wouldn't, but that's also the, the heads up to him, right? Like, if you think this is the final approval based on this, it's not from me. I mean, the rest of the board can, they have their own opinions.
That is completely.
But I don't want to lead somebody on in the sense that says, yeah, you're good, bring it back the way it is, because I'm sure his act not going to approve it the way it is right now, it doesn't make any sense. Going along with your thoughts, if we do something that's conditional, I, I get that, and I, and I'm not against that idea.
Sure.
And it is conditional for 24 months, or whatever it was, I think.
Sure.
So I'm not, I'm not against that, I just think it's got to be very clear, this has to look, you know, to get this kind of use, this has to look spectacular. It has to look like you're driving into the city, and it doesn't need to say marijuana, but nobody cares anymore, right?
Agreed. From, if you don't mind, can I, can, you mind, I don't want to speak out of turn.
But yeah, go for it.
But, but the way I view this is, given the fact that the applicant needs to come back for final site plan approval, and given the reversionary clauses in the conditional rezoning agreement that would revert it back to its current zoning, I, I view this as, as just a prove it vote. Like, okay, we, you know, if, if the commission so approves, you know, then, then we're not approving anything final, we're just saying, come back to us now and prove that you're serious, and that this project is serious, and will have a serious benefit to the city. But it's a prove it vote, is the way I see it.
Well, I, I appreciate how you said it. I think that it makes more sense at this point, so. And I don't know where everyone else is on this, but I, I think it has to be very bulletproof, conditional, and, and for your client, we just have to see something that's a lot different than what we're seeing right now.
Sure.
That's, that's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. I'm ready. I have several things. I'm going to start with a question, as I'm looking at, I don't know how to reference this rendering, other than, there is a site plan here that shows grower facility, two-story with basement, which I believe that was the original church. Then there's a walkway that still exists between that building and then the next larger building that's just to the south of that, these buildings are on South Old Telegraph. And there's three sections to this building. There is a consumption lounge, there is a cell phone company warehouse, and there is a provisioning center. What's the consumption lounge for?
And through the chair, if I may, there, there, in the original submission, there were renderings provided, and, and the original request, there was plans to do consumption, which is not permitted, and provisioning, which is not, at that time, it wouldn't have been permitted because there were no more licenses, the window had closed. So those renderings in that portion of the packet are outdated.
Okay.
And the renderings that were provided today would be the most accurate renderings to target your questions toward.
Okay, thank you for that. So the renderings, these beautiful color photographs, don't tell me what's happening in these buildings. It just shows, I see some nice places to sit, this looks like, this looks like it's the warehouse for the cell phones. I think that was one of the descriptions on the original packet we were given. Processing center, grow house. So I guess I'm confused by what we're looking at, but, you know, that's kind of secondary to my other questions. The, the supplemental information for the petitions that were signed were from 2020. I don't really see these as being really pertinent to our package from the neighbors.
Again, Chair, though, that latter portion of the packet was from the original submission, so it's, it's fair to, to like, not target your questions towards those items.
Okay, right.
And instead focus on the submission.
So the same thing can be said for the traffic study, because that was from 2019. So I'm just going to ignore all that. I'm going to come to the packet that is dated with what we're talking about this evening for what we went through tonight. Donovan, there are no licenses that have been issued for this applicant from, of the city of Pontiac for marijuana?
That, that is correct.
Okay. All right, so now, as I go through here, the conditional technical, conditional zoning technical review, again, a medical marijuana grower and processor is not allowed in an M1 zoning district outside of those three other districts that we had already defined in the city. The planning commission recommended denial from a prior request in 2020, and the city council also voted to deny, and here we are back again, trying to get something happening. The owner agrees in the conditional agreement to obtain site plan approval for the proposed development within 24 months of the effective date of the ordinance amendment, approving the rezoning or map amendment. All right, so we got two years there. Then, the, it says, "Such site plan as approved shall become the binding development plan for the property." Once the, once approved, the site plan is valid for 24 months. So here we go, here's two more years, so we're up to four years. Then under that, it says, "Owner agrees to complete the development of the proposed development within 48 months of obtaining building permit," which is not the same as the site plan approval. So we're potentially looking at six years on this, before anything could potentially revert. So this buys the applicant a big window of time, which makes me very uncomfortable for requesting to do something that isn't allowed in that part of our city. Then, as I look through our packet, for the master plan, it is clear that medical marijuana facilities do not achieve the objectives of the master plan in this location. So we have to be cognizant of our master plan. Just because someone wants to do something doesn't mean that it's allowed. Our master plan is trying to give direction to people that are coming into our city, and it also supports our residents to say, this is what we feel is best, because our residents had given us input as to what they wanted to see within the community where they live. So for rezoning criteria, when there are 10 items that are called out here, which I appreciate that Donovan has done this for us, 10 items that are, the criteria, eight of the 10 do not comply. So it's not even like a close call for me, I just see this as, again, square peg, round pole. When you look at this pink, little graphic up on our screen in the zoning area, everything around it is yellow, it's residential. And the way the potential layout would be for this building, there's going to be people driving behind the building, along an alley to get out, which is going to be basically in the backyard of the people that are abutting the property immediately to the, to the northeast. I just don't see how this is, you know, this is really something that's going to help. And by the way, it still is in disrepair. The building is still looking really shoddy where the church used to be. That sign that's over the door, it's on Google mapping, if you look at the street view. There was a, you know, metal, medical office space released, the sign has ripped and torn, and it's ripped over, flipped over itself a thousand times, it's still over the door. There's another sign that is just the frame, it's all rotted out and rusted there. The parking lot is all alligatored, and it's got weeds growing up through it. There's vines growing all over the building that used to be the church, and where it connects the walkway to the other part of the building, none of that's been ever taken care of. So why should we, as planning commissioners and as city residents, welcome a property owner who's treating their property like this? I mean, what do we have to look forward to going down the, going down the road? I just don't have a very good feeling about this, and I'm still not behind it with the conditional rezoning, because I think it really leaves us vulnerable as a community. Those are my thoughts. So I'm ready for a motion.
Could I ask a, a follow-up question? Because I think that's an excellent point about the six years. So, Mr. Smith, is that, is that your understanding as well, that there is sort of this rollover that there could create six years of purgatory for this conditional rezoning?
Through, through the chair, yes. The agreement does give the two-year window for site plan approval, the additional two years for, I'm sorry, the second approval, and then the additional, I believe the 48 months for building permit approval. So that does equate to that time period, and then the applicant does have the ability to request additional time if they feel necessary through amending the agreement. So they have that option as well.
Well, that's a deal breaker for me.
All right.
If I, if I might reapply?
Uh, uh, mm, mm, no. We've got all the information we need, I believe. We've had a lot of great information from you, I appreciate it.
Just please comment.
Yes.
So there's no way to change?
Nope.
This? This is what's proposed, we don't get to change it, so.
That's their proposal, we have to take it.
This can't go to, we can't bring this from, I don't know, it's stated, six years to 24 months.
They have to propose it to us.
Correct. We would not be able to make changes to those conditions offered by the applicant.
Okay, I'm ready for a proposal and a motion. And by the way, Donovan, because we have two items here, should we? And by the way, Donovan, because we have two items here, should we do first the rezoning proposal first, and then the site plan would follow?
Yes.
Okay. So, I will need a proposal, please, about the zoning ordinance, which is ZMA 22-04 first.
Okay. Per the, uh, let me try it. Per the rezoning criteria found in section 6.804 of the zoning ordinance, planning division's technical review and findings, I make a motion to recommend denial of ZMA 22-04. The recommendation would be presented to city council for denial that the request of Vincent Cereal, Get Your Greens, to rezone parcel number 64-14-31-381-027, from C1 Local Business and P1 Parking to M1 Light Manufacturing with CR, conditional rezoning.
Do I have a support?
Support, okay.
Anyone? Anyone? All right, can I support?
Yes.
All right, I support. Roll call, please.
All right, roll call. Commissioner Parlove?
Yes to deny.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes to deny.
Commissioner Duval?
Yes to deny.
Commissioner McGinnis?
Yes to deny.
And Commissioner Northcross?
Yes to deny.
Chair, the motion for denial passes.
Thank you. Now, I need a motion regarding a site plan review for SPR 22-19. You want to go for that? You wanna do that motion?
Well, I'll try another one.
Thank you.
I make a motion to deny preliminary site plan review SPR 22-19, Vincent Cereal, Get Your Greens, parcel number 64-14-31-381-027, pending zoning map amendment, ZMA 22-04, approval from Pontiac City Council, and request the applicant.
So, uh, just clarification, you can probably stop at the end of 22-04?
Yeah.
Yep.
Let me just stop there.
Strike the additional.
So, strike, um, approval from city, uh, from council, whatever. Did I reread that?
You can reread it and stop at 641431458010.
Okay. You got it? Everyone got it? Okay.
I support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
All right, Commissioner Parlove?
Yes to deny.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes to deny.
Commissioner Duval?
Yes to deny.
Commissioner McGinnis?
Yes to deny.
And Commissioner Northcross?
Yes to deny.
Uh, Chair, the motion to deny the preliminary site plan review, uh, is passed.
Thank you. Okay, so on to the next item on our agenda. We are at new business.
Yes, Chair, and we have one new business item. We are not looking for a, uh, an approval of this item today. This is more a, a communication or request for the shores at Crystal Lake is proposed to come and provide a special meeting or preliminary site plan meeting on November 7th. We are simply asking, um, does the commission have availability to establish a quorum on that day?
So, what you're gonna need from us is our availability?
Yes.
Is there a reason we can't do it on the regular meeting?
Can you do it, we have to do that now, or can you do that, can we do it, do we have to do it now?
Uh, just to, if, if you have the availability, I, I would like it today, um, so we can move forward and, and start to do the necessary steps to schedule that. If you aren't, if you are unable to confirm that today, at least by the end of the week, we would just want to know your availability.
I'm available.
I'm available.
I have a quick question, and I had asked Vern this before he left. Did the soil borings get done on that site?
Yes. We, we have soil borings and a traffic study.
Okay.
So, both, that was, that information would come to that meeting.
Okay.
And, uh, to answer your question, Commissioner Shepherd, the special meeting in regards to the preliminary site plan for Crystal Lake, uh, we are proposing that be actually a joint meeting with planning commission and members of the city council, so we can start to, uh, fish out any comments or questions in advance of, uh, a more detailed plan coming. So, for that reason, it would be dedicated to that item, so we don't have any other planning commission items that just may come and, and distract away from that content.
Good. I'll be there. Will you confirm that it's gonna be the 7th, once we get?
Yes.
I'm available on the 7th. Lord willing, I'll be there.
Thank you.
Amen.
Amen.
I will let you know by the end of this week.
Okay. And I, I think that was everybody. Commissioner McGinnis?
I am available that night. Is Chair Fegley available that night, do you know?
I will confirm with Chair Fegley.
Okay.
As I do not need a motion for that, I'm, I just wa, wanted to confirm availability. So, as we move forward with working with that group, I would say within the, probably by this time next week, you should have some answer in terms of if that meeting will take place or not.
Thank you.
Um, thank you.
Now, we are on to public comment. Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Carlton Jones again, 1323 Oaklawn Drive, Pontiac, Michigan. I, I just want to say, I appreciate, uh, being here tonight and, uh, listening to the thoughtful comments from the planning commission. Uh, I do want to say the, the comment that, uh, Anita mentioned about, if you want to use the term, community enhancement, I, I, I hope that all the commissioners truly are taking heed to the whole idea, uh, especially when it comes to that, uh, the medical marijuana issues. Even though we know it was passed months, months ago, uh, it was truly passed, and, uh, as Commissioner Shepherd was saying, a lot of these folks in that arena are, are now losing this window. Uh, but we really want to make sure it's a win-win for the community as much as possible. Uh, and anything that we can do to try to make sure that those people who went through that rigorous process have an opportunity to engage, we want to be, you know, supportive to try to make that happen. Because I think when I was asking the question earlier about the sequence, and I think Commissioner Shepherd did right, because this last group was not in the sequence as far as having a license and going through their whole process, you know, so, you know, I just would, I'm glad to see the planning commissioner saw it that way also. Myself personally, in engaging with workforce development and trying to push the city forward, feel free to engage anybody who's coming to truly say they want to work in that arena, uh, feel free to point in my direction. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
How many minutes we got?
Um, three.
Okay, I'm gonna make it work. Good evening. Uh, my name is Melanie Cherie Rutherford. I stay at 1018 Argyle Avenue in Pontiac. I, I come here today, I'm a little perplexed, not about the decision that you guys made tonight. You guys made the decision that you thought was in the best interest. I, although I'm disappointed, because I thought it was gonna create jobs for people who actually stay in that district, you felt that you did what they, it needed to be done, so we have to always accept things when we can't change them, but we can always come back and try it again. My issue is about the 65 acres from last month, and how that was an opportunity, thank God for the council, to see things go in a direction, we say, for change and growth. And so, I was reading this book I have called The War of Art, and it says, "Casting yourself as a victim is an antithesis of doing your work. Doing it. Don't do it. If you're doing it, stop." Pontiac, the city of Pontiac, is not a victim of circumstance. We are a victim of resistance. And we're resisting to change. We're resistant to something new. Anything that doesn't look exactly the way we want to, it to be, we resist. And it scares me as a citizen, and it scares me as the other roles that I might play in this community, because there are so many business owners that are trying to come here, professionals, doctors and lawyers, who have visions and dreams, and who are not trying to use this as a come up, but to bring the city up. And when they come before this planning commission, it is my hope that we start to see the vision and not have resistance. And so, that's what I felt that, that decision was. It was resistance, plain and simple. It was disappointing to read the responses to the former person that was over this, uh, committee, because I read it personally, and I just don't understand what is it going to take to inspire change in this community, and not based on emotions or whether you like a person or individual. So, I'm just simply asking that we not be resistant to change, and that we be open, because there are so many business owners that I work with and collaborate with who want to come here, and I don't want to tell them, "Not right now," because that's not my answer. It's right now is the answer. And for that, I say, "Good night."
Thank you. Great. Public comment is now closed. We, is there anything else that anyone needs to add here, uh, commissioners?
I guess, I, I would just encourage everyone who's received an absentee ballot to start working on them. It's a long ballot, a lot of issues. Those who have not received an absentee ballot, if you wish, come on down to the city clerk, get your ballot right now, if you haven't put in for it to be received in the mail. This is a, all elections are important. Please, take your time, think out the issues. But most of all, make sure you put in your thoughts and by voting your ballot. Very important. We all win when, when, when everyone votes in an area. Politicians, regardless of whether the area voted for them or not, they take note that that area is voting. So, it's in, all in our best interest to vote.
I agree. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, great. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support.
Quickest motion of the night.
That's right.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
That's it.
Thank you, next up.